I'm gonna put my motion back.
I still know.
Steve.
There's a second.
Your mic.
The move, the second, the subject, the subject, the all the fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold. Or there is. Okay. Department reports. Mike. Your voice. Yes. Both my good words, there I go. I'm the world, camera. Three thousand three.
If you like them.
There's my, my. Okay, so we did do a tree. Since the last council meeting, we've got the man left to develop the lights and the bulbs. It seems though that the wind must have got some of the lights because they were all working and then some of them in the front didn't work, so that was kind of exactly. Anyways, so we met with David from Evergreen, he came out and showed us a leak. So we can, they use that this summer in our water system, try to help find some of the water leaks that we have or don't have. Try to track down some of that stuff. So we worked on the park, we got, we cleaned up the park and did some gutter work. Uh, the dump station closed down right now because it froze. So we'll go ahead and get it all put back together, but we may have to, whether accordingly, open it or close it or do whatever we had to do there, because there's really no way to insulate it and leave it open. And we insulated it in the kitchen. Some of the plumbing in there, so it wouldn't freeze up. Met with K in our homes over here on Silver Street, they're all hooked up now to our, our utilities, water and sewer. And all that stuff, I don't know if they're actually all the way done to their property, but they've got down to our mains and hooked up and ran the lines, so. They did all that. Other than that, we had some sick leave, John and I both. Since last council meeting, so. Other than that, that's all I've got.
Is there any question, your mic? Trouble? So could, could you, can you talk a little more about the water leak? In, in, if we're.
Oh, he just, it's a new sounder that he ended up purchasing. Evergreen's, they have a certain rider that comes around and helps us, especially little cities that don't have the equipment. So.
That's something we can do when the weather turns back to good, or?
Oh, we can do it pretty, if we think we have a leak somewhere, we can't really find it, then we can actually do it like a few years back, you guys had a huge leak before I got here in the alley and nobody could find it. So they didn't even know it was leaking or where, they knew there was a leak, but they didn't know where.
Is there the ability for us to do anything proactive with that, or?
Or just. This summer, if he's got a chance this summer, I asked him if he would mind coming and we could go check out some areas where I think that maybe a little bit, some of the older plumbing.
Cool. Thank you. Any other questions? Are you Mike? Oh, there'll be. True. You're up.
Okay, so we received templates from Lewis County Sheriff's Department. And what that is, is a Chinese forms, is we converted the lower city to the city of Toledo, which makes sense when we have cases that go there, prosecutors are. We've done about twenty forms of this particular time in day. I met with the Lewis County prosecuting attorney, the deputy prosecutors, introduced myself again, to get to know them, let them know who I am. Again, that's a professional relationship thing to do, so if we have cases, they'll, they'll be more familiar with us as far as taking those cases. Reassured him that we're going to follow the formats. The deputies use themselves, that went really well. Do you have one case that I'm looking at right now, received the, all of the material back actually today? So I have that material and started reviewing that as superintendent's. And, and the school system over here. We set out the surveys business and community and I want to thank Cindy for helping me on that, she did a great job. Creating those surveys and there, there are surveys that's in, in paper form that can hand to you. There's also, old surveys are on a link, so you can click on it, fill it out. Via email and send it back to us. There's a series of questions on there, so what we're looking to do is gather that data from you. Once we have that data, we'll be able to kind of tweak our, our, you know, our services and how we go about law enforcement to better suit the, the business of the communities. We're getting a lot of good feedback already, Cindy. I don't know if you saw that, but there's a lot of feedback. So we have a lot of, a lot of things to go over there, so that was really good. Uh, let's see. I went to the, the Lewis County sheriffs and fish chiefs meeting today at Lewis County, it's really good, so they were able to actually connect, connect back up with a friend of mine, who's a captain with Washington State Patrol. That's really good, because I'm going to reach out to him and start asking him, what, what do we, what do we need to do to get these flashing signs out here at the beginning? At the church and then over here by the bridge, so when you come in, someone first is flying over the bridge, it captures your speed and says, you're going this fast, warning, slow down. And that's another deterrent, I'm not saying that we can't get those, but I am working hard to try to get those. And that's going to come from just talking and developing that relationship, so continue on with that. Continue to make a public appearances at the churches on Sunday, and, and I think that's really important, because I had a comment made to me today, or actually on Sunday, by congregation members that they feel a lot safer than so many Sarah in the morning, and that makes sense, we know that in the past, not necessarily here, but in other areas, people have gone to churches and then really, you know, done things, so. But making that appearance on Sundays, sporadically, not every Sunday, but we try to get there as much as we can, it's kind of lets anybody know that we're in the area, and I think that's good. So we did a one hour class on murder and missing indigenous women, children and men, at the request of the superintendent of the school district, Native American Heritage Month, we went in there and we, we had a good time, the kids really were, were involved in it. And we did what's called a round dance at the end, so if you can imagine all those kids in a big circle and what it is, you'll grab hands. And then you go into the center and you scream and yell and you come back out, it was it was kind of pathetic, first time, then I got the mic, I wanted to stick, come on, Toledo, it's here, get on the screen, and then they, they went off, because then I turned it back over to teachers. That was good. Randy, Kenny's in, and Bill, another, another Marine Corps veteran came out and helped with that, I appreciate that. We're walking through the elementary middle schools, we went to the turkey bingo, that was, oh boy, that was serious stuff there. Turkey bingo. The mayor was there, it looks like, there's people there with five boards, they're blotting away. Yeah, so we did that, and then we went to the quad parade yesterday, that was good, I think we had twenty quads.
There's a lot more than one.
I think it was twenty quads, so it's growing. So. Um, we need to talk again about the ongoing contract with Winlock. We need to amend that. Or just maybe keep it like that until the end of the year, for some subtle changes that I think. So I don't know if that's something we can talk about later.
How's your math, how, how that was going?
Okay, and so, the way I, the way I view it is, when I'm on duty here right now, I can have a call, so I don't, if I need backup, I'll call Winlock to come back me up. Because right now, according to the contract, if a call comes to Toledo, they're responding regardless, even though I'm here. Because the contract calls for that. So maybe we can amend it, you know, to the attorneys where it says that when Duane's on, he's handling calls. And then when he's on his office, then Toledo, I mean, Winlock will handle the backup for that until we get the part-time officer on. So this is a really fluid situation, it's sort of part of a key case, because it seems to be evolving constantly. So, we can talk about that a little later in the month. Still attending the monthly safety board meetings, which is really good, with a superintendent, to make sure that our children are safe in the schools, if that's important. A part-time officer position has been posted. We did, we did receive, we're getting, getting ten thousand dollars in free money for training. Because Ryan Kozak provided us with the information, how to apply for that, it came from Waspick. And so for the smartest, that's a good chunk of money, that allows us to be trained in the new use of deadly force, use of force. Those types of things have been passed by Jay Inslee and Rod, Roger Ferguson, so that's really good. We got that, that money is coming pretty quick. And then, let's see, I think that's about it, did I speak off the top of my head, so any questions?
Thank you. One. This is one of those, don't shoot, not the girl, okay? Don't shoot the messenger. We noticed that, that there are things that you did that you were requested to attend. And I'm kind of wondering, there's also nothing in the budget about revenue, because other cities, when when police are requested to attend or, or whatever, they actually invoice for that. And is that something that we want to look at? Considering we have such a frank budget, should we invoice?
If you're on duty, you're on duty, doesn't matter, you're getting.
Yeah, so, so that, yeah, I think, I think we're, I understand what you're saying. So you're talking about services, like, like Lewis County would say, we're going to request this, which would be for you to do this particular thing inside Toledo. And, and so she's kind of right too, so why, why I'm on duty here, if the community has anything going on, we wouldn't invoice them at all for that, we would just go to the and, and be part of it. Including the school, I, me personally, I've never invoiced the schools or anything like that, to, to be there, be, you know, part of the safety community, and stuff like that. I think that's what you're talking about. And that's a great point, but I, I don't, I don't see that as something that we should probably do, I don't think that would go, go over very well. That's just my opinion, obviously I'll be with, with you guys, say, decide. And it's part of the job, as I'm saying.
I, I get that, I also understand that there's a little fake budget, you can barely afford any protection, so we need to look at all different aspects, I think.
Yeah, and let me make sure I say it right, Jamie, so I understand you're a really good grant writer.
Well. Really to tackle.
That's what I do. So one of the things we want to do is, we'd like to see that cost grant, where, where we write the grant based on data, something like that. Then they would, you know, give us one or maybe two officers, probably one. For two years, they would cover it, and then after two years, then the city of Toledo would have to pick up the cost of that. So for two years, you'd have a police officer petition for free.
Okay, so have, have you found that yet?
I know what it is, I haven't looked at it.
Okay, because I, I looked earlier in the year.
Okay.
And it's expired, so there, there is still, maybe, I don't.
Okay.
It seems like that sort of position of women, they close at a certain point in time, and then they reopen.
Right, it's an ongoing, yeah, and I think we can show that after two years, we would be able to sustain that.
Right, what I'm saying is, if they have it real.
But something is definitely with that, absolutely.
And that needs to recall.
Well, that, that's usually where, where it is, it is usually through cops, it could be a different grant as well. I have some friends at the academy that I email them and ask them, well, there might be stronger grants. But I, I, I don't, I'm not a big grant writer, so I'm not even nice and popular there.
Help in there.
Excellent.
And use your wisdom here, so that.
Okay.
Awesome, I was hoping that we were going to be able to have Winlock back up to just your weekend time by now, is there something? It's a contract. To have that, right, but the contract was going to get changed, or was supposed to get changed.
Right.
So, I'm. I guess I have to.
I think it's just a matter of, of, of just, just saying, you know, write up a new contract, a new language, get it approved by the council and the mayor. And then cancel the old contract and put the new one in place. I think that's really, obviously with the attorney's oversight, I think that's pretty much it.
Because we're at the point now where we have budget intervention going on.
Right. Exactly. Yeah. So, any other questions?
Are you true?
Yeah, one last thing, Husky's one.
Nice to see you.
No, they're, they're, no, they had a chance.
Okay, moving on, the clerk's office, department reports, Devon. Ranger Porchnor, please.
Pretty short.
Real short.
Wow, we're due. I was doing audit, and then I'm covering until the evening clerk's duty right now, since she's not here anymore, and Jill's doing audit invited.
Any question for? Council?
Do we have the status of what's going on with the Pine Street, about 425 Street? They were given some, what, they were given a, a notice? Something, anything, just sitting, or is that something that Duane needs to?
To check in, really, you know?
Yeah, I think we served, served them, they, they removed the one RV. Um, I, I think, we're going to have to look at what the city ordinance say. And so who's, who's responsible for the water, of course?
We are, you mean, first shut offs?
Yeah.
Of the board.
Okay, so maybe you and I can get together, and we can go there together as a team, because you obviously have the water knowledge, I don't. And, and I'm, I'm almost certain they're, they're plugged into your water system right now, that second, or the second.
It is. The city. First of all, is why I can look at it and determine, but then you're. Both for you.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, I understand that, I've been watching them, and there's there's people living in that, for sure.
And if they keep hooking their gun by slopers and orders for a fine or something.
Let's hook up the.
There's, there's never been a hunt. But I know.
We'll have to look and see where they hook it up to, or this is the house that we're wearing.
They hook it up to the river.
It's been moved.
Oh, there's the sandpipers, there's the garden.
Yeah. So that's why I'll go with you.
Right.
To give you the authority to do it, if they say anything, then I'll put them that way, while you're looking at it, you can tell me.
Yeah.
From your, from what it is.
Yeah.
And we report back, give them another warning, or we should say, here's your fine, and unhook it, and. Good, we were, we said, go.
Right, yeah, it's been a really.
What I want to understand.
That was why.
So, and what we're.
Okay.
Would be the right thing to do.
Maybe more? Yeah, okay.
Not bad, and then Devon, I was, is very confident you're coming in the payroll stack, or in the bill stack this time?
No. January.
Okay. Okay. And then the, that you know, hard drive rotation, does that, does that have been going on between backups?
Yes.
And so that's recent.
Yep.
Great. That's it.
Hey Jill, do you have some reports?
Nope.
We're turning personal for Jill.
Did you get any more information from the auditorium?
They've been in the office this week with us, so. I've been with them. In office.
So you're going to forward their email?
Yes, when I get working on it.
No more questions? Okay, one more. Counsel reports, and when you heard that?
Uh, I volunteered at the elementary school garden with a master gardeners, and we did deep saving with fortunately, we were inside. And we were the serving graders, and I have to say, we have dedicated elder volunteers, that's awesome. Um, I also checked on the food bank space and house, because I know that is coming up, and I wanted to see what was going on in that space, and it's still unchanged behind those doors. Um, I also attended the line of ATV parade, which was quite a bit longer this year, and Mr. and Mrs. Claus. Well, again.
I suppose so.
Oh, wow.
Gee, Emily.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm saying they're, they're watching from the North Pole.
Oh, really?
They are. So I just wanted to see what the handle was on that, because I know that some questions will be asked. But that space is relatively unchanged. And our local other food program has been feeding hundreds of people, whereas I am aware that this one has only, on the books, has only had one. And so that to me is shocking. Are they, am I right? So.
Anyway.
Anyway, I went back there, I'm on camera, and in history, we all. Okay, all right, okay, well, so did I, okay, the end.
Okay, I got a thought right now for council reports, I told them I have a public hearing on 2023 final budget, six of two, I don't know what the time is now. But I'm late.
It's twenty-one.
So we closed the record meeting down and asked for the final budget report of voting on that, which is 2023 final budget.
No, I think it's just a, I think it's a public hearing.
Please, so the council board here goes, 2023 budget. Do I need to read this, everybody, or you guys are going to copy it?
It is posted online, and so I'm, I'm like, for Lewis, all this is back there.
But we need to vote on it.
Nope, this didn't have a hearing.
So, open up. Everyone's got a half question? Questions?
I only have one, uh, it's just a procedural question. It, it, it looks like we have a balanced budget for the first final hearing.
Yes, true.
Although, I'm not sure that it takes into account the very large amount of possible revenues that we may take in, there was a few technical, going into a fact of law or building, we're going to pay in through the city. And we just have any questions to the, to the, to the campaign, they have in the party, the general funding, where there's many came from? Or are they just going into the general fund?
No, they won't just go into the general fund, there's some community practices that'll have to be followed with one hand, whether in speaking, when, when I went to the budgeting, in this little budgeting conference this summer, that was one of my questions, was how do we deal with that, it's very unknown this year. And it seemed consensus was, we should not plan for anything until it's actually happening. And that if we do get lucky and get something here this year, then hopefully it will offset the respect that you might give us. But yeah. I think there'll be a lot of work that'll get done with that on screen.
Well, then at that point, we're not to amend the budget if something else comes.
I don't know if we amend the budget for additional revenue. If we're starting to make, if we're starting to spend it, we would. I'm assuming the bulk of that gets put aside.
And, but it would be a line item.
It shouldn't be a sum. I don't know how it.
Revenue is part of the budget.
It will go in the general fund. And it's own line item.
There it goes.
So whatever amount we get, whatever time, that'll go into the general fund, correct?
Yes.
All right.
But it would be an identifiable line item, so that when you budget back here, that's a line item to look at.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing and go back into our committee, to the council reports. Eric, you have your council reports? Um, yeah, uh, let's see, this is my opportunity to ask Steve if he will bring something up during public input, tell us what's going on with, with the state transportation meeting, that's going to be happening.
When we get to public, but I will be happy to do.
Thank you. I had a great time with the chief at the high school. And we already spoke on that, great. I spent a couple hours with Johnson of TRJ, he does our planning work. And I think that we've got a verbal agreement that he's going to come on next year for 2023 and take care of planning and permitting for us. And he's giving us an amazingly good sweetheart deal. So I think he wants us to succeed, and it could for him, it's a good press, but I'm looking forward to some progress on that. It's about it. We're good. Charlie?
Nothing.
Nothing? Kathy?
Me, for yourself, I had that, after spending the budget. And that was fascinating, so please, if I finally can at least read it and discuss different points about it.
Correct? Mary?
Okay, so I, I submitted a request that they wanted to get electric charging in town. And when I, and we were accepting, um, my draft phase two, it only covers the infrastructure and not electrical, so they run charging stations. So I did not submit phase two. With the new legislation, there's probably going to be other opportunities, maybe one comprehensive. And then I can apply again, I'll keep an eye out for it, but at this point in time, we're not going to be on charging stations, remember? We don't have the money to get the charging station.
You know how much a charging station costs?
No. There's different varieties, and so it depends on what it is. And also on that note, I don't know if it's in construction or already existing construction or, or permitting guy, they are there, you can request permits to put charging stations in your own home. Now, what was, there was another permitting, what was that during?
Do we, we need to generate any revenue from the loans for them?
Uh, we would not generate any revenue from them, but we would permit these. Maybe it's a state recording. Another thing that came up, too, and I think.
That's it for council reports, committee reports? Please. Their reports, their work? I think I pretty much put everything in that one, so. Okay. Park board? Anything, Joe?
Other than bathrooms are all open, and thanks, Mike, for choosing the thing in the kitchen. And the gravel was cleared, and it should be some pretty much. I don't have enough.
Thank you. Running commission? Thank you. Fighting commission.
Uh, nothing as far as the planning commission is concerned. I imagine I either kind of a thought I'm making. A presentation to the December planning convention. But regarding the this KPO. Uh, application for talent, not of. Uh, as well as report on the annexation process with ten percent versus six percent.
Water sewer streets. Plan group committee.
Can I go along with Johnson um coming on to help us with planning committee? I'm really looking forward to him.
Okay, moving on to a special presentation. Nothing. Public comment on agenda items. There any public comment on agenda items? Eight then. Any other public comments on agenda items? Nothing. Let's move on to the bill. It's ordinance number seventy two, water sewer rates, first reading. Order number seventy two, ordinance for the city of Cleveland, ordering. Commending ordinance number seven twenty five, section five and section. Eight dot four dot one of the city codes, the Cleveland. Stating rates for sewer. On a bi-monthly bias and repealing ordinance in conflict.
Under unfinished business. There is a Spain seven eighty one water and sewer rate second reading. We'd be doing that one first.
Yeah, we should be able to.
Want to skip around?
No.
Okay. Well, we accept the motion. Of orders number seventy two. So moving in second, any other discussion?
Well, yeah, it's it's a little hard to work that we follow. Bring out one's request that we try to make our water sewer fees. Keep up with inflation. We've been trying to not do that for a long time and. That's what we were kind of what we're going to do on another unfinished businesses. It is not. So this reflects this it's present increase.
Any more discussion? Let's roll on. All of the members say aye.
Aye.
The both. Orders number seventy three, twenty twenty three budget first reading. First number seventy three, an ordinance for the city of Cleveland, adopting a budget for the city of Cleveland for the year twenty twenty three is part of our law. Adopting a twenty twenty three. Fee schedule, that's an aid and adopting all the city of Cleveland policies and procedures with attachments. Water in the motion. Fix them. Ordinance number seventy three. Moving second, is there any more discussion?
So I spent about six hours with this today. Um, I'm not sure it's in a position for us to vote. Uh, there are some. Massive errors in it. So I I would be fearful of. Of what we're voting on. We have. Yeah, yeah, trying to tie in the Christmas tree. Um, different tree summary with the what is in the ordinance so that I can. Speak to it properly. Um, I haven't seen those two yet. The. Uh, water shore four oh one has. Uh, twenty three thousand dollar error in it. That I can give you a line item for. Basically, I think what happened was the uh. Was the percentage to be used for. The percentage to be used for. On cravens was for the seventeen hundred percent instead of seventy. So. It 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 looks like. It looks like it it will all wash out, but but what I'm seeing in there is twenty three thousand dollars or plus when I should be saying that's a thousand dollar. Negative number. That would be ours number. Five thirty five eighteen of June, Joe. Uh, that is on page thirteen. Of the.
What was the last of the buyers?
Eighteen ten oh two. Sorry, P W system.
Yes, that could have a smaller error in there, yeah.
I, you know, I, so I did the math out and it does work out pretty darn near for seventeen and a half, so.
Yeah. Um, it's because you changed the seventeen and a half to the water and I probably put it at the sewer. Yeah.
It's still, we still have summer health in on um. On. We are in water. Just a couple lines down from. Five thirty four eighteen ten oh six. You know, I'm a huge fan of having these. I mean, those cuts, I don't like any of the cuts. That's kind of. A horrendous cut, to be honest. I was just seeing places where. The, I mean, we're running a a large negative number. Let's see, the new runs of the platinum made this number and there's a lot of room everywhere else. Have that work out, which I fully understand. But I saw things tightening up, an example being the. Biosolids processing, we usually over budget. Three or four thousand dollars on that and. That fee is supposed to go up and we and that number was also trimmed at the same time, so that's thirty dot hundred dollars with a fat, but it's not going to. Help somewhere else. I'm a little concerned. And also is concerned that. With a recession beginning. And and. Numbers in there that don't have like, you will start drastically everywhere. That that we might. We might not have surplus that we usually have. So there was four thousand dollars in summer help in the water area and there was two thousand dollars in summer help in the one on one fund. Couple of little minor things which just. Give me this and didn't work out right. But but none of those were.
I can fix those.
Yeah, I, you know, the whole thing kind of works out the same. It was just showing. Going a large, you know, large surplus will be. Um, and then. I'm a little concerned that maybe it would be nice to talk about the art of funds because. I really wasn't paying attention to that little line number, so if the art of funds are in the general, it sounds for the general fund. And so are we counting, are we counting on those? So is this kind of a, this budget wouldn't fly next year when we don't have these funds or?
No, they're already in there. You'll be taking them out and putting them in whatever fund you use them in. So I've already budgeted an estimate on certain things for that.
Okay, so they're not like sitting in some revenue area like.
You won't get any more of it, so no, I didn't put any in the revenue.
Okay. Okay, but that, okay. But our current budget has this kind of council on us spending that.
Yes, yeah.
So this. Hopefully, we're going to get revenue.
Okay, so what's for?
So this, can I, can we, can we accept it with those changes? I mean, I don't want us to have to call it by the medium.
You can accept it with the changes. It's not, like you said, it's not going to be a huge.
We table, we could also table it to the next meeting and have it fixed.
Well, we're running against the end of the year. We have to. So if we don't, if we don't get the first reading.
Oh, yeah. We're going to get it right.
I was just, I would just. Motion that we accept the budget changes that Eric talked about um. The twenty three thousand, what what did you say it was in four oh one?
Yeah.
If that fixes the situation, then I would. Then I make the motion, I can make the motion to amend the motion so now um. We can accept the budget with the changes that we're just discussing.
We have the house the first one first. Reading. There we go, amended. And hold on that.
This can hear it maybe because it's a. It's an ordinance.
If we amend it, then we do a first reading. But then we amend it. Second reading. On this, we will not go forward, we will reject them. We amended one, you will have to have a first reading. And then a second.
You can just amend it with the changes. Yes.
That would be included for free. Correct?
Second reading, should redo the changes, second reading, they'll be in there.
Do the first one, that's the first one. And the second one will have the.
I think what she's saying, we're going to accept it. These, with those changes outside of that, so.
Okay, it's removed in second and all to favor please say aye. Moving on to ordinance number seventy, pass through fees, second reading. Ordinance number seventy, an ordinance of the city of Cleveland, establishing pass-through fees and charges for running administrative services for engineering. Planning, vehicles and other professional services and establish. Establishing an effective date here of. And writing those. Serviceability.
I think we're going to make this up for seven eighty.
There's a second. It's removed in second. Any more discussion on it? All of the members, they say aye.
Aye.
The both. Republican carries, number two on very. Orders under seventy one. Which reads, an ordinance for the city of Cleveland, Washington, remaining ordinance number seven thirty five, section five. Section eight by four by one of the city code. Of the city of Cleveland, establishing rates for sewer services upon a bi-monthly bias. And repealing ordinance and read on but.
I make a motion that we define ordinance seven eighty one water sewer rate second reading.
It's removed in second. Any other discussion?
Although yes, we already.
All of the fair please say aye. The both. Here, anyone? I did all of them. Yes, answer your question. Other business that will start with society in their experience with the president.
How was the new time? Well, it just seems like for the last X number of months, I've had a question about the existing two things. Vacating the case and. And what was going on with um the Toledo neighbors program and the raging success of them. I just wonder about where we are. Are they actually vacating it?
The the timeline stays January thirty first. It must be returned to the city the way they first granted it. Their fees have been canceled from twelve thirty one. And we've got till January thirty one. The agenda item that was just brought up before Mike Warren.
Really, we're.
Yeah, I'm going to be a good man. I I make a motion that we table this now because it feels premature until we actually have a session in that space. And then I would love to have this in front of us.
Yes, we can rely, we want to. Eighteen, the five-year-old and. So I'm hoping it's somewhat.
For a table.
I I assume, I don't know if we don't have to vote.
Oh, yes, I think we should table it. It would be nice to get the space back, see what the space looks like. And all those things before we just maybe bring, we could reuse the space and we. I mean. It needs. Not a space you want to use. I mean, it's indeed, we can give them that to.
No, I mean, it's table and tell it's, you know, it's vacated.
Anybody have any other business?
I I just wanted to let you know that I had reached out to David Burkey once again. He actually called me back, but in. And they'd like to set up a meeting. Uh, for a week from today, sometime during the day. Um, and he would. Like it to be a Zoom meeting for some of his people because he's got uh. A grant writer or a grant person. That wants to provide information for the possible grants for our city to improve improvements. Uh, and she's in Spokane and can't make a meeting. Um, and I believe one of their engineers is also going to be. Uh, so I thought that uh. If we could establish time during that day so that one of the ladies can set up the Zoom protocol. Uh, he will provide me a list with the names and email addresses of those folks he'd like to invite to attend. The meeting and then we can go ahead and get to our people. Um. I was thinking myself and Gerald and Eric and Patty perhaps. Uh, the ones that she's better than. And then he's in there as well. My only, my only issue with that would be we have a court.
Maybe, maybe.
You guys do have a street committee. In your budget book, you do have a street committee that would be your council, your two council members that would be attending. Or in lieu of, then you could have somebody come in, but you can only have two without a meeting.
I was out of the room and you said you want me there in the meeting, so.
You were sitting right there.
No.
I just came back.
Yeah.
This is gonna be a meeting between the Department of Transportation and our city that they had promised us last month.
Oh, that, that, okay, that.
Yeah.
I wrote along.
And, uh. So we're looking for a time and I, I was, I was thankful for the time that we had. Them, the well, if that's what you're counting. Um, so we set that up, have it here. As the council chambers, for those that are accepting, uh, for the, the remaining people outside that are going to attend.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, let me go first.
What's my? Two o'clock?
I don't know, I'm asking. Two o'clock, I'm good, that's what I'll write for it back then.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, then, uh. I will, uh, Senator Joe, who, who wants to do the information for us, if you'll invite. Then I will provide the names from the, for.
So from council, a little bit, Eric and.
We'll figure that out.
Okay. There'll be two.
Two complaints. Is that open, maybe? No. It's not an open meeting, we're trying to do a little bit, a little bit, because I don't wanna over the bottom, so it could think that I have to have on. Yeah.
It's a time for us to play nice. And use, use, use some sugar and setups on. Both. You have to use that.
Is that all right?
This run radar hasn't come in. Our competition.
Yeah, one other, other business, there's no announcement, everybody. Council and the goway. As I accepted the general direction. That's over the end of this month, it'll be longer employed, it's really, really long. And as we need to get that page out as quick as possible, and I got some ideas for people on the review board. It's impossible. They, they, they said they'll stay on until the end of the month, they hope to budget thing. We get all salary. That's all I got, brother business, anybody else have any other question? Comments? That's fine.
Diane, cheese ball drop, New Year's Eve, don't miss it.
Diane, cheese ball drop, New Year's Eve, in there, be quiet. It'll be fun, have a good trip. Maybe that went to July, and we're not gonna do the July one anymore, but we will, we'll try to pick it up where we're at, probably, here, the year we want with that. There. Joe.
I, I think that this time would be a nice time to thank Devin and Joel, who are just.
Yes.
They and the community.
Very.
I'm kind of forward believing, but I think that, you know, we really. The public has appreciated your service.
Thank you.
Really, the many times that I call up with you. So I'm down my line. Or when shopping. First of all.
Thank you.
Also. Doesn't surprise me.
No more questions, where are the comments? And again, more than a day.
So. Okay, so.
Please, the secretary of general, the mayor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both, don't forget to read my stuff, thank you for the comment, appreciate it.
Thank you.